Meeting of the Galt City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Payne.
Here.
Councilmember Hewer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Powers.
Mayor Cruz.
Here.
If you'd all rise, please, for a silent prayer followed by the flag salute led by Clerk Siddles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get the video statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable system.
All right. Do we have any agenda approval additions and or deletions? Seeing we will go ahead and move on to presentations. Public Works, Roadway Grant Projects.
Good evening. This is to give you a sneak peek at some of the major roadway infrastructure capital projects that will be coming our way and largely funded by very successful grant applications on behalf of Gwen Owens and our engineering team. But they will result in some fuss and muss as we construct them, and we're already beginning to reach out to property owners for fence relocations, permit standard, do driveway conform work and sidewalk work, et cetera. So we thought we ought to bring the council up to speed on kind of where we're planning to be and some of the neighbors we might be talking to. And with that, I'm going to ask Gwen to come up and give you a brief presentation.
I'm talking to our roadway grant pop projects very briefly. The city has been very successful in obtaining grant funding over the last few years. The grants that we have received are shown on this slide above. We've received a total of five grants totaling approximately $1.5 million. These grants are competitive grants, require staff to complete applications and to be ranked against other agencies in Secog's six county region. The application would actually take a lot of work to complete, and then, once the grants are completed, there's various rules and requirements that we have to follow to be able to be reimbursed for the grant. In other words, it's kind of a process-heavy endeavor. For these reasons and because design and environmental don't compete well, grants are for construction only, with the remaining work to be funded by Measure A. So these grants require approximately $600,000 in local match. Additionally, we need approximately $1.5 million needed to actually complete the projects. Most of this will be funded through Measure A. With the construction of these projects in probably 2017, 2018, there will not be a lot of other transportation projects that we actually complete due to funding. So going through the improvements very quickly. All right. So the green or bike lanes that were funded through CMAX are the bike lane slash routes. The tan, which is on Second Street, consists of infill sidewalks and also curb ramps, and this is funded with Secog's local regional, excuse me, local funds. The brown, which is on A Street, consists of some road rehab, bike lanes and sidewalk repairers, and this is our RSTP fund. The blue slash fuchsia are the $1.8 million that we received as an active transportation program, which the blue is the bike lanes and bike routes. The fuchsia is sidewalk, curb ramps and pedestrian islands and bulbouts. The yellow is the $1.7 million of CMAX the city just received in December, which will do some road rehab, sidewalk repair and bike lane routes. Given the nature of the type of improvements, since they're all very similar and since they overlap, we decided as city staff it was better for us to design and construct it all as one project because you have an economy of scale. You only disrupt the neighborhood once as opposed to going in, once to do sidewalk repair and then another time to do road repair and then also bike lanes. So as you can see, we will have significant repair and improvements in the southwest portion of the city. So let me just go briefly over project steps. We are required to get 29 permits to enter. So we need a permit to enter if we are relocating mailbox, fences, or any improvements that are put in by residents within our public right of way. Also, when we repair sidewalks, if it's within a driveway and we need to conform the slopes within the driveway, sometimes we have to go on private property to do that. So we've mailed out 29 permits to enter. To date, we have eight permits that have actually been signed and returned. So we're in that process right now. Environmental is completed. We are in the process of finishing design. We are anticipating on going to California Transportation Commission early to mid-2017, and then we plan to start construction late 2017, early 2018. And with that, I'm available for questions.
Okay.
Gwen, can we get A Street on that line? You've got bicycles there.
Correct.
Elaborate a little bit, and also I want to ask you before you started, along A Street, we have a few meandering sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
Are both going through ten inch.
Okay. So basically, what the grant is for, and let me go through the colors first and then I'll address the meandering sidewalks. Okay. So the first one is kind of that brown, and it's the Secog Local Regional, and that's the $1.6 million. There's going to be some road rehab, bike lanes, sidewalk repair and curb ramp repair. So basically, what will happen is if the curb ramps aren't up to standard, they'll be repaired. If the sidewalk is damaged, it will be repaired. When we do bike lanes, we are actually putting on green bike lanes. There'll be a slurry seal most likely throughout the entire section of A Street because we'll have to re-stripe. Now, that is basically the Secog Local Regional. With that, we didn't have quite enough money when we actually submitted the grant because we didn't have the project designed. So what we then did is we figured out what we needed, and so when we submitted for the active transportation program, which is ATP, we got $1.8 million. Part of the work is on A Street, which we are using to fund the bike gap and also the pedestrian improvements. Then we have locations, there's four locations on A Street that are the fuchsia boxes, that we have uncontrolled crosswalks, and so we are putting either pedestrian islands or bulbouts, and if there's not flashing beacons, we would put in rapid flashing beacons. So that's what all those kind of fuchsia type of colors are there. Now, with the meandering sidewalks, we are not taking out those sidewalks and replacing them. It would be a significant cost for us to be able to do that. The cost is really just for repair and making it a more walkable, bike-friendly community. My understanding of why you want to have meandering sidewalks is it's a more attractive feature that typically is, typically like the planning department request those things when we have large landscaping areas to make it, to break it up, and it's not as linear.
Actually, I was afraid you were going to say about.
Oh, no.
I do like them.
Yeah.
But I think I have a question. A bike lane, is that just where you color part of the street for bikes?
So basically, we currently have bike lanes on certain streets. Depending upon where they are, they're typically about five feet. Usually, if it's adjacent to curb, you use gutter pan, which is about two feet, and then you have three feet of pavement for about five feet. What we will do is that area, not the gutter pan, but the pavement, will be like a slurry seal green. So it's very common they have them on Sac State, Riley Field, West Sacramento, different areas in City of Sac that I've seen them. And so what it does is it more clearly delineates where a bicycle should be, and it's clear that a vehicle should not be in that area.
I think that's good because we have a lot of cyclists that use the meandering sidewalks. It is the why it can be nice to have some place. Will we still have the turnout lines laid or you can just turn?
At the appropriate locations where you have intersections, you will still have your turn lanes because we didn't want to take those away. But there are sections on A Street that we have just striped out that it's a striped median, there's nothing there. Some of those will be reduced or taken away, but they don't serve any value because it's not a landscaped area, it's just striped pavement, and it would be better used by bike lanes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more question?
Quick addition on your question about sidewalks, just to add to what Gwen said. We're not, if there's just an aesthetic crack, a minor crack, we're not going to be repairing for aesthetics, but where there's a vertical dislocation, trip hazard, badly broken concrete or an ADA requirement where we don't meet the minimum slopes for driveways and things, that will bring it up to ADA compliance standards.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you, Gwen. Moving on to the next presentation is the draft financial impact analysis for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade.
Before you move on, I just want to commend staff for going after grant panels, all the work that you do and take extra time to go out and grant disamazing that you can do it. This is so important, and I just want to say, certainly appreciate.
Councilmembers, this next presentation has been a long time coming, and this is a presentation of an update. You might recall way back in 2014, for those either on the council, we started a process and then we got some initial direction that helped us with some SRF loan guidance on 20-year terms and things to move forward with what was then an urgent time-sensitive upgrade project to avoid fines and other problems. That project is still under construction, but now it's time to consider how we pay the piper, so to speak. So we're back, and Mark's going to give you a quick overview along with our consultant as to what the next steps are and what we've been doing for the last two years.
Mayor, council. We're going to put Gwen on our grant search for this next. She's good at that. Just an outline, this is going to be a presentation just of our, what the debt service impacts are that we identify with the different alternatives that we have. And what we're looking for tonight is some direction or general, a direction to us to see, one, if we're going in the right direction, two, if we need to change course a little bit before we do a few other things. And I'll get to those in just a second. But what has changed in the last couple of years, or what this project came out of was about, in 2010, we were given requirements by the state regional board to do some, to do nitrification arsenic reduction. It was a regulation. There was no way of putting it off. It was required by the state. It was in our basin plan. Our 215, there was a 215 discharge requirement in September to meet the nitrogen and the arsenic removal. After we got this project underway, under construction, they had told us previously that they would consider giving us extensions if we were underway with the project. So once we got it underway, we went to the state, we asked for extensions, and we received a one-year extension for the nitrogen removal and about a three-year extension for the arsenic. And the reason for the arsenic extension is because we, because of all the water conservation, all the different things that were going on at that time, it was really impacting our ability to figure out how much arsenic was really coming into the plant. Now, the arsenic is not in our drinking water that you come through the distribution. I mean, the arsenic has been taken out, so we meet all the compliances of the water. But the arsenic is a waste product from the treatment plant, and it ends up coming to the wastewater treatment plant, which impacts its regulations. And so we have a, you know, a two-pronged attack on, you know, on our arsenic system here. So we've got those.
What's the source of the arsenic, then, if it's not from the drinking?
It's in the groundwater.
If it's in the groundwater, isn't that what we drink?
Okay. We send it through a chemical and physical process removal. We remove the arsenic out of it before the drinking water heads out to the, out to the distribution. So we meet our arsenic requirements in the drinking water before it goes out, but we're taking the arsenic out of the water.
And then discharge.
And we're throwing it down into the sewer.
Yes. Okay.
And that's where it impacts the sewer now. The requirements back in 2010, where we had to, our discharge had to meet drinking water standards for arsenic. And none of our wells meet that, so what happens, I mean, several, most of our wells at that time did not meet it, the arsenic standard. So we had to pull arsenic out, but that arsenic still had to go somewhere and went to the plant, caused the plant's arsenic levels to go up, the wastewater plant. But we got a few extensions. We've been working on it. Now, didn't realize until Matt, we're going to blame this on Matt. Where did you go? That the coloration in the back, it kind of faded out, but the lighter, the lighter colors are what we've already completed, you know, from facility plans to coming to the council two years ago to get direction on the SRF loan. The SRF loan was executed. We went out to construction. That was executed. Construction completion is expected in 2016 or this summer. We also, all of the requirements to meet nitrogen removal were in place back in November. And so we have, you know, we have been meeting the nitrogen removal requirement for about three years, actually, because we did some modifications in the plant just to prepare us for not meeting the construction schedule, but we met it, and we got our extension. And so a lot of things fell in place. Now, we're coming up with the, once the construction's completion, completed, then they're going to be looking at our, all of our costs and our expenses that are related to the project, they being the state, and then we'll come up with a final, a final installment agreement. And then that usually takes place about, all of that happens within about a year after In order to pay the debt service back, we've got to do a cost of service rate study. We just went through it in water. It took about, about 11 months to do that, and it's going to take about the same time in wastewater. But the cost of rate, service and the rate study we're going to do here is going to also include impact fees. It's going to, you know, because there's a portion of this debt that's going to be attributable to future development, future growth, and so we've got to allocate that and make sure our customer classes are correct. All of that's going to be combined together to make sure it's all correct across the board. And then our installments will start in a little over a year from now. The options analyzed, what I'm going to do is have our consultant, John Farncoff, who's the senior vice president for HFNH, come on up here and talk a little bit about the, all the findings and what was put together here. And then we'll be, you know, I'll come back and do a follow-up on a few things that he's talking about. But keep in mind, this is not a cost of service, this is not a rate study. It's just, here's what this debt service is, here's what this debt is impacting our rates as we know them today.
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm trying to know how to work this. Okay. Thank you. The options that we looked at in this report that you've got a copy of and that we're presenting tonight are similar to the options that you saw back in 2014, when we helped you make a selection between a 20-year and a 30-year loan term for the SURF loan. Since then, we've updated them, you know, for current costs and made some other refinements. What we're really looking at here are combinations of borrowed funds, SURF loan amounts, and the use of your reserves. The SURF loan can be modified, it can be adjusted up to as much as almost $30 million, or you could cap it at lower amounts. With your reserves, you have over $9 million in reserves that can be applied in various ways. Part of those reserves need to be set aside as a capital replacement reserve. It's a requirement of the SURF loan, and the amount can range from $1.2 to $1.6 million depending on the amount of the loan. Staff would recommend setting another portion, $2.8 million, aside as just an operating reserve to provide working capital for cash flow and for some emergency contingencies. And so the remaining roughly $6 million is what can be used in various ways to help fund the project. One would be just to simply use the funds to reduce the amount of the loan. It could be used to pay for the arsenic project correctly, or it can be used to reduce the initial loan payments at the beginning that would help get the rates down. Some other considerations in the analysis that we did, we used connection fee reserve money. There is about 30% of the plant capacity that is available for growth, and we used about half of the connection fee revenue to help fund the project. We contemplated treating the amount of funding for the arsenic reduction project as a loan from the sewer fund to the water fund, and the water fund will repay the sewer fund. So it was a 20-year SURF loan, in effect, an internal financing is how we would treat that. That would affect the water rates, which we have not looked at here. The, what we assumed in our analysis was that the sewer rates would not be increased to help restore the reserves. In other words, the reserves that are there right now would just be used. You could decide to do that if you wanted to, but that's an assumption we didn't make in the analysis. And then finally, as Mark mentioned, what we've done here is we've sort of taken a snapshot, frozen your current rates, and we've looked at how funding these two capital projects, the treatment plant upgrade and arsenic, would affect your current rates. And so that's not really a proper rate study where you would project revenue requirements going forward, looking at other cost increases operating as well as other capital costs, and also conduct a cost of service analysis that would allocate those costs among rate pairs. So when Mark talks about a cost of service and rate study, that would be done later. We're not really doing it right now. These are approximations that we're giving you to help guide you. This is a summary here of how these funding structures are laid out. The top part shows the use of borrowed proceeds, the SURF loans for each of these three options. And the bottom part shows the use of reserves. Just quickly going across these, you can see in the SURF loans for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade, we're looking at in option one and option three, complete loan for that project, for that part of the project. Option two, we're not using as large a SURF loan for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade and no funding for arsenic. In option one, we're also, you would maximize the loan, bring it up to about $29.6 million to also cover the arsenic project. That's the only option where the arsenic project is funded through a SURF loan. And the use of reserves, you see how in option one, we're basically, we're funding both it and the arsenic project from a loan, and so we don't need reserves for that. But we do use $3.4 million in reserves to hold down rates in the initial period. In option two, where we have the lowest loan, we're using the most reserves, and we're using those reserves both for, to reduce the amount of the loan for the wastewater treatment plant as well as for the arsenic project. And option three is a bit of a hybrid. We're only using the loan for wastewater treatment plant upgrade, not for the arsenic project. The arsenic project would be funded through the use of reserves, and then we'd also use reserves to hold the rates down in the initial years. This is a graph here of the fund balance, and this is a combination of the capital and connection fee reserves and how that plays out over time, over the next 10 years. So the red line is option one. It's the option with the highest loan and the least use of reserves. And so, you know, in approaching things here, you do come out of it with more reserves available for other uses. In options two and three, you see the reserves dropping much lower, and then they rebound. The rebound in the reserves is caused by connection fee revenue that is estimated to come in that wouldn't be used, wouldn't be needed for any more capital projects, and so it just brings the fund balance up. The fund balance is not coming up because we've increased sewer rates to do that, as I mentioned, that assumption wasn't made. This is a graph of how the cost of this funding would increase the sewer bills, and I'll point out that the curves or the graphs start at where the current bill is. It doesn't start at zero. It starts at $45.75 per single-family dwelling unit, and then it climbs up from there depending on the type of funding scenario here. It's steepest with option two, where the rates go up immediately and we're not using revenue to hold down rates, which is what's occurring with the options one and three. The red and the blue lines there, and so you see them gradually taper off. Again, these are, what we're doing is we're just holding your current rates as sort of the baseline, and then we're adding these additional costs to them. We haven't done anything to try to factor in any other cost increases either operating or capital costs the way you would in a rate study. To factor in time here, because these payments will extend for a number of years, we've done a little economic analysis, excuse me. We've just summed up what rate pairs we pay over the 20-year period under each of these three options. When you do that, just taking the, what they pay at face value, that gives you the nominal value of the sewer rates there, and you'll see that for options one and two, it's just by coincidence the same amount, $15,047. And remember, that's the entire bill, so that's not just the cost of the financing. That's that $45.75 plus this additional increment of cost. Option three has the lowest nominal value. Option three also has the lowest present value, which is what you get when you factor in estimated effective inflation. In both cases, the difference between the highest and the lowest nominal or present value is about 3%. It's not a huge swing. Finally, this is a table where we've tried to sort of organize things here to maybe give you a sense of how these comparisons rank among each other, and we've looked at four different parameters here, rate increases, the amount of the SURF loan, the number of the SURF loan, the use of reserves and the nominal and present values. Excuse me. What we've done here is we've scored points where one would be the option with the poorest or the worst ranking in each of these parameters, and three would be the highest. We haven't weighted them. We treated them all equally. They, I think if you went through a real thorough ranking process, you would weight them because some of these parameters are more important than others. But that, I think, requires, you know, your policy getting injected into the process here, and it really wasn't appropriate for me to try to do this. So these are just straight rankings without weightings. You see here that among the three options, option three has the highest ranking. Options one and two are fairly similar. Again, they're unweighted. But with that, I should turn this over to Mark.
Can I ask you a question for a second? I thought I heard you say that you were always considering borrowing on these water reserves?
Not borrowing, but, well, I guess you could say it's a loan that water is getting from sewer and water is repaying. So if, let's go back to this table here. For example, in option two, where $3 million is used to pay for the arsenic project, that would be treated as a loan from the sewer fund to the water fund that the water fund would pay back. So the loan is to the water fund, but we're not using water reserves, per se. It would be paid for through water rate increases.
Let me help with sort of a question that I'm sure is out there. Why are we, what are we talking about here? What you don't have in front of you is what the arsenic fix is. And right now, we're currently looking at a new deep well as a solution rather than more treatment. And so if you're putting in a new well, then it's a water supply. The other thing that we're looking at and thinking about at the staff level is, okay, well, where's the arsenic coming from? It's coming from the water treatment and getting dumped into the sewer. So is it a sewer problem? Yes, but the source of the problem is the water. So when you're trying to sort of right-size water and sewer and get the right costs and the right cost center, it's initially feeling like that should be, it comes from the water. The solution to the problem is likely a water solution, and so at first blush, we're kind of leaning toward, well... of leaning toward, well, if we maximize the SRF loan that we have in hand that has a very good interest rate, that would create some reserves that rather than go out and get yet another loan, we could loan to ourselves out of reserves that would result. We have yet to put in front of you and will be thinking about as we look at the cost of service study, which is the next step. It could be treated as a wastewater, because it was increased wastewater restrictions and regulations that are causing, it's in the effluent of the wastewater plant, is what we're trying to correct. So loan it to water and call it a water expense, or just call it a sewer expense, it's sort of coming out of the same pocket, same customers, same users, and we might actually rethink the idea of making the loan and going through yet another Prop. 218 on water, and maybe just roll it into whatever is ahead of us for a Prop. 218 on sewer. We're gonna have to do that at some point.
What do we have in reserves in the water fund?
I don't have the number in my head. I want to say we're a couple million or so, Mark? On the water reserves?
On the water reserves? I think the fund balance is supposed to, at the end of this year, is about $1.6 million. I think that's what it is.
Is that all aside, just for capital, or is that during MNO, or what is that?
That will be the fund balance after everything's paid, you know, for the year of the OAM and the CIP and stuff, so.
Well, after, when I look at here, if I'm reading this correctly, it looks as though 50% of the connection fee for sewer is put to capital, the other 50% is put to MNO. Is that, am I reading that correctly or incorrectly in this report?
That's the assumption that's made, yes.
Okay, that's the assumption that's made here. So I guess my question is, on the 1.5 or whatever it is, is there a split on what's for capital and what's for MNO and the water fund?
No, for water, it would be a replacement of an existing well. Straight across, it would be, it would be for the existing users here. We would, we would be taking a high arsenic well, you know, offline, and replacing it with a low arsenic well. So it would be, it would not allow for any additional growth on that well. It would just be replacing one.
And it's $3 million for a well?
Well, when you look at, there's a lot unknown, so you go into the design. But the well itself should be about 1.7, 1.8 million, and then if we have to get another, we're hoping we don't have to get another electrical service. There's all types of other things that may add up to that. You still have engineering costs, design costs, and project management that will take at over $2 million. We just don't know yet about the, about the different infrastructure that would support the well. And so that has to come up during the preliminary design. The estimate right now is just being held at $3 million, cover the entire project. But that is not a, there's no growth on that well. It's just replacing an existing well that we have.
As we get into final design and production of the new well, if it was producing more water than the, whatever well was replaced, there would be a re-opener to look at, that could be used as a growth impact and use impact fees.
Steve, I have to ask a question. It seems like some years ago, you were looking into parts of the problem. We said we were gonna attack it by taking the arsenic out of the drinking water so that it wouldn't go into the wastewater, whatever you call it. But now I'm hearing it's a problem, we didn't, something did it to help ourselves by taking it out of the drinking water and then nothing. But we're gonna still have to deal with it the same way. Do you recall?
I do. Some of the, probably 2020 hindsight, we'd have known, if we knew back a number of years ago what we know today. At first, the drinking water standards for arsenic came way down, and that's when the city had to put in all of the arsenic treatment in their water at the tune of several millions of dollars at individual treatment plants. So the solution then was, well, dump it into the wastewater plant because it's a solid when it's taken out, and that solid will just go down with the other solids and get removed at the treatment plant. What we didn't know then was that due to the chemistry and the length of pipeline and going through pumps and things, some of that arsenic is re-soluble, it's re-dissolving, coming out as a precipitate solid, it turns back into a part of the liquid, and our filters can't take that out at the wastewater plant without major upgrades. So that was sort of a game changer. The other game changer was, how many years ago, about 2015, the new arsenic discharge requirements came in, and they now had to be drinking water standards instead of former wastewater standards. And now all of a sudden, we're having to take that arsenic back out that we put in from our wastewater supply. So that's sort of a simple view of what's changed. And so now, you know, again, 2020 hindsight, we might have done something different 10 years ago if we knew then what we know now. So now, the solution is to keep the arsenic from getting in there in the first place.
Vice Mayor, just to let me extend on that a little bit, there was discussion that we were hoping that we could transport it, we can remove it from the plant, from the water plants and transport it to the, you know, that was one of the alternatives in the beginning, and that was found to be not feasible, because we, not with our current system that we had. We needed bigger clarifiers, bigger settling tanks, because the arsenic just wasn't settling out. It was a really fine item, so we had to extend that. And so we went into the design of this arsenic facility at two sites that could remove the arsenic, condense it, and then we could truck it over to the plant. Well, that project was expected to be over $4 million, you know, when we got through the design, and that was, that was about 12 or so months ago that we found that out. They said that was too much. We have to look at other alternatives. That's why the.
It's hard to keep moving.
Well, now we have a really, really good target. We, by taking our ti, or not taking our time, but by finding out that $4 million project, looking at other alternatives, we were able to go and actually take empirical data, that's data from our system over a period of six months, and to determine that this project will do exactly what we want it to do. Whereas the other one was still a guess. We put in the clarifiers, still a guess if it was gonna work or not. And at $4 million, I don't like guessing. But at $3 million, it's a hard, this will absolutely do what we need it to do.
Like I said, I know that this is the best we can, but it's hard when the regulations and the part is changing.
Quick question. Quick question for you. Okay, if I understand this correctly, Steve, you're saying the solution at this point is to go ahead and do another deep well to offset this?
Yes, not only would you get a purer, less, much lower arsenic-produced water, that allows to take a higher-producing arsenic well offline and replace it with much better water quality.
Okay.
Also get us in an aquifer that we're not competing with ag farmers to get water out of.
Right, so we're, I think it's a Tier 2 aquifer, is that correct, that we're gonna be dealing with?
Which is.
Below the bedrock. The other question I have is, if I remember last year when we talked about this, you were talking about, at the time with the, with the removal of the arsenic, we were back flushing into the wastewater system, correct?
Yes, and still are today.
I thought, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, EPA put a, eh-eh, you can't do that on us.
Well, not from the water side. The eh-eh is on the sewer side, because it's dissolving and isn't being removed, and therefore it's getting into our effluent, and that's what we have to correct.
So we're spending 1.5 million to sink a deep well, and then the other, was it 1.5 or 2 million is to remove the arsenic on the other end?
No. There is no arsenic. We're thinking about $3 million, maybe less, on final design, to get a new well connected to an existing treatment plant for iron and manganese, and have emergency generators, and we've got to do a test well to make sure before you spend a million and a half dollars on a new well, we've got to pick the right site. So that's, the $3 million is in lieu of removing the arsenic at our individual treatment sites.
Just to clarify, there will be no arsenic treatment. We put in a deep well, it's done. There's no more arsenic coming off of that well. So there won't be any other site, I mean, there won't be anything at the wastewater plant that we have to do for arsenic treatment. It's just at that well site, holds water that has little or no arsenic in it.
Until EPA changes their rules again. Thanks, Mark.
Are you saying that we only have one well, one deep well? Two deep wells?
We'll have two deep wells, but we also have two other large-producing wells that are producing right at the limit of arsenic. They're right at the top. So when you blend all four of those together, it can, it can provide everything that the city has had before the water conservation kicked in, so.
But it sounds like there are still the arsenic, if we have two other wells that have, we need to get arsenic in it.
We have, we'll have one other major well that will have arsenic in it, but if you're blending, or that will produce an arsenic residue. But as you're blending it, it should, you know, we've done, like I said, I've done actual testing throughout, from September into January, that showed that we would be able to deal, that we would still meet our standards, because we're diluting it as it's coming into the plant and keeping under that magic 10 parts per billion.
And if and when the target changes yet again, then probably the solution would be yet another deep well and take a couple of those higher-producing ones offline in the future.
How are we confident that we can do the deep well whenever we want to, and we'll do what we want?
Talking with the different consultants that, that were involved in the deep well and also involved in the Merton formation that they know about, it's, we are the only straw that's in it right now. There's nobody upstream of us from here to the Mount, you know, to the Sierras, there's nobody, nobody of significant. There's a few small residential users down in the Merton, but there's nothing else, and there's no, you know, they're looking at the yield capacity as being way beyond our needs, way beyond our needs. And so it really looks good, you know, it looks good for that formation.
Beyond our needs for how long?
Pulled out, way past the bound.
Current general plan, anyway.
Okay.
All right. Yeah. So, so back in 2014, when we originally talked about this project, the concept then was you were going to treat ammonia, nitrate, and arsenic at the wastewater treatment plant. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then somewhere between less than two years ago, we changed from treatment at the wastewater treatment plant to go in, abandoning that idea and going to just a deep well.
Correct. We, during the preliminary design, we had to go out and take multiple lab samples, multiple all through our system to see what's happening with the arsenic, how it precipitates out, what it does with the chemistry of the wastewater plant. You know, we went through all of this analysis and all of its testing, and then we found out that we can't do it through, just at the wastewater treatment plant, that we were going to have to do it at the, before it gets mixed in with the sewer.
The, because in some of the reports, and I've talked to both of, well, I've talked to Steve about this, in the last NPDS permit, and I think it was in 2008, it said in there that the existing plant, the 3MGD, would handle the ammonia and the nitrate, denitrification, up until about 2.8 MGD. So my question is, did the nitrates and the ammonia standards, did they also change?
Correct. They went from, the nitrates were at, I believe, the total nitrogen was at 30, and it was reduced down to 10. Ammonia was around, you know, these are parts per million.
Correct.
And ammonia was around 4, and now it's reduced to 0.9 or something like that. So in 2010, that permit that was issued in 2010 had those lower standards in it, and we were given a period of time to comply with that.
Okay. And this goes back to my original question two years ago, is what portion of these improvements benefit future development? And I know you talked about updating the fee schedule and so forth, but that was, it was two years ago we asked that question, and I'm still here tonight without a clue as to, one, what the capacity of the plant is, or, two, what is the surplus capacity? What is attributable to new development? I mean, I just don't know.
Right now, what we did is we did a real simple calculation, because this isn't a cost of service study.
Right.
We said, how much, how much flow do we have right now, which is just a little over 2 million, and what is the plant rated at for the state rating? It's at 3 million. When you take, you say, okay, you have about a 30% capacity remaining there. So what we did, just for this, we threw 30% up and said, that's all gonna be attributed to future growth. So all of the debt service payment, everything involved in that, 30% of future growth's gonna pay for the debt that we have. All right, that's what we're showing here.
But in the meetings in May of '14, in June, you sat there and told us that we were looking at about a 3.3 MGD plant. So we did, in fact, get excess capacity over, you know, what was planned.
What we're going to do in the next rate study, as part of the task of that, is to sit there and provide a defensible calculation of what the plant capacities are, of the different features of the plant, so we can associate that to future growth. We have to go through this series to go to the state, and we also, in the new permit that just came up, we have, once a plant comes online, that's when you start testing it to see what it can do, you know, what it's capable of doing. But we have an opener clause in our new permit that allows us to come back and rerate the plant, and that's all part of this cost of service study, to rerate the plant and also to see what the future development costs are associated with this debt.
Well, isn't the permit already allowed us to go to 4.5 now?
It does, but it says our plant is only three. It's only, and it won't rerate our plant until we have it online, until we have all the new components online, and then we can show what we can get out of each of the components.
I mean, and I'm just basing this on past history, because in the past, when you had a clarifier and you had an oxidation ditch, and we had two of each, it equated to roughly a population of about 30,000 3MGD. You add an additional clarifier and an additional oxidation ditch, and it appears to me, just raw numbers, it's 4.5 MGD. So we have, in fact, and I understand that there's been different changes in the standards and additional treatments necessary, but it seems like a pretty large jump to go 50% above what the existing capacity of the plant was.
Correct, and without knowing, you know, without knowing the biology and sitting down, I could tell. Everybody here can take them on a lesson for about two hours to go through the different biology of the unit, but it comes down to this. When you have, the more you want to get out of the system, the longer it's gonna have to sit and cook at the treatment plant. So that, large tanks and everything now have just really been reduced in size, you know, durability. That's why we had to add larger size. We have to have more microorganisms in contact because of the lower amounts that they want, the lower levels, and it just impacts it. I think, and I said it back at that time, that we would have probably a 3.3 MGD or larger.
Right.
And when we do this analysis, when we, you know, we do this analysis, we take our, you know, plant up, and what we do is we stress the plant, but it all has to be online to do that. And now, we won't be able to start stressing the plant until about September. Stress it, we determine what all the different levels are. That'll be part of our cost of service as we do the impact fees and everything and allocate the appropriate cost for future development at that time.
And when do you think that will come back?
Us of service, we're looking at probably around December at that time, because to include this component of the, of stressing the plant and getting an analysis of what each of the plant features can handle, that's gonna take about a month. So, and we won't be able to start doing that until about September. So then we're gonna take those numbers, we're gonna do two things with it. We're gonna put it in the cost of service study, and then we're gonna go to the state and get a rerating on the plant, you know, simultaneously.
As you can see on this sort of closing slide, is our goal would be probably best case in December of this year, so we need, you know, about six, eight months to study it, and, you know, could run into early next year. But the whole, the whole point would be to get this figured out, so we make sure our impact fees are correct for a lot of projected growth, and you have an item on your agenda tonight, that we want to make sure that we get the, get the right fees in place before we start pulling a lot of permits for that type of development.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark.
So that brings us back to what we really need from you tonight. Where our preferred and recommended option would be option three, that essentially, just to summarize, would maximize our current SRF loan availability at approximately $27 million. That in turn, about, I can't remember the number now, approximately 3.6 million of that would then go into reserves, and be paying back sunk costs in the design and be paying back sunk costs in the design and environmental phase that have already been expended out of reserves. It would, in essence, pay those reserves back. That would then give us a funding source to do the arsenic project, whether it's on the sewer side or loan to the water side. It's going to come out of the customer's pocket in the same amount of money, one way or the other. It's just where we keep it as a cost center. And then we use the remaining reserves that would be available to us to ease into the rate increase rather than do it all upfront immediately in one fell swoop. And there's two alternatives that let you spread that out. But option three would be what we'd be recommending. It ends up with the most gradual increase in rates over the next six to seven years. We'd spread that out and, as well as end up at the lowest overall rate at the end of that ramping up period. And again, the impacts that you see in your staff report and on the slides we showed you is strictly the debt service side of doing arsenic and the current plant construction. And a full cost of service study would be looked at as part of any 218 process going forward to make sure we allocated it appropriately as we've been discussing.
All right. Counsel, any further comment, discussion? Do I have a motion for an option?
So Steve, looking at...
Looking at the 10 years. So, currently, $46 or so dollars a month, we would end up at the, I mean, with option three, we'd end up at about $62 a month.
You're looking at somewhere between $18 and $20 a month increase that's brought out over the next six, seven years, and then it would level out just based on debt service.
That's providing we don't have to worry about another upgrade.
My crystal ball doesn't tell me what the state's going to do to us next.
Understood. But giving Cal E.P.A.'s history.
We do know that with our current permit that we just received in 2015, that there are no new regulatory requirements. Typically, when they bring in some new thing like a reduced arsenic or a reduced ammonia or reduced nitrogen, they typically then, on the following permit, when it comes up for renewal, give you that next permit period of five years to then work toward that solution. So we think we're a good 10 years away with the investments that we're talking about from any additional regulatory impacts.
Well, I wasn't on the council at the time which the SRF loan was sent. Is the SRF loan, is that a 20-year or a 30-year loan?
The direction that we received from council was to go with a 20-year loan.
Year-long?
Was there a significant difference in the rates with going with the 20 and the 30, or projected rates?
Yeah, attached to your report, I don't know what order it's in, because mine was out of order, but is the PowerPoint we did in 2014. And you'll see very similar graphs, except we were looking at six options, 20 years set of these same three basic options, and a 30-year loan. And so you can sort of see what that would look like.
It's on the attached PowerPoint on page 10, so the 20 and 30-year combinations.
Page 10 of the 2014 PowerPoint.
2014 document, okay.
It's a graph with six lines on it instead of three. And the higher three sets of lines would be the 30-year option because you're paying more interest.
I don't see that. I don't think it's, it's not in my packet. Did you find it?
In our board packet. Now, it looks like...
Not in tonight's PowerPoint, in your staff report as an attachment.
That's what I'm looking at. I don't see it.
I'd be happy to just, I apologize to the audience, we don't have that on a slide tonight, but we pass this down and council members can take a quick look.
Oh, wait, here it is. Here it is. I found it.
Now, I should note that in 2014, when we presented this, our arsenic costs were thought to be less than a million dollars. So, sort of the creep has been, it's gone from one to three, that that's actually to save us a million over what it could have been at four. So, that's the regulations that, the regulation hasn't changed in the two years we've been looking at it, but the cost to fix it has.
So, it sounds really kind of an innocent question. So, when we take the arsenic out at the site, at the wells that are, the wells that still are having, you know, I know arsenic's just naturally occurring. And when we take it out at those sites, are we still continuing to put it into the wastewater, or have we stopped doing that?
We currently are, because it's the only option we have. And so, we're now talking about, so how do we fix that? And the answer would, current recommendation would be to build a new deep well, take the arsenic-producing lines and their associated water treatment offline.
There's no other way of getting rid of the arsenic than to put it into the wastewater?
Well, that or treated as a hazardous waste, and it would be much more expensive that way.
Okay, that's what I'm, that's what I'm wondering. There's some other way to dealing with this.
Mr. Walters, did you have something to say?
Thank you. On the loan, are you going to separate this loan out when you get it? We already have that $11, right? Let's separate it out. That doesn't get taxed. The CPI isn't taxed on that. That's straight $11.02 for the life of the loan. Are you going to do that with this one? And it would be upgrade number two.
That would certainly be an option that we could look at. And we would, I think, based on the prior hearings and the settlement, more of the same would like to be the way to go. When we do the cost service study, we may also identify some operational cost issues ongoing that would likely remain part of the base rate, which would be CPI adjusted. But since the rates are a known amount for a fixed period of time, it would make sense, no reason to escalate those over time.
Yeah.
You will consider that?
I don't think we should do anything but that.
Thank you.
You have a fixed payment schedule, why would you have CPI to it?
Yeah.
I'm looking at these two, two graphs on the 30-year. Now, you're saying this, this 30-year is the one that was from 214? Because there's a separate one here, which is the figure four, in the staff report, that shows a portion that it only goes 10 years out. But on the option three, on this one, it's $62 a month, this one it's 65, almost 66 a month. So I'm trying to figure out which one is this. What am I looking at here?
Does that have both a 20-year and 30-year set of options on it? I can't see what you're holding up.
Yep. You got, you got a 20-year here and a 30-year here.
And so it's the same three options financed over a 20- or 30-year period.
But, but is it based, what are the amounts for this one? If it's different, I mean, the numbers are different than what I have here in the staff report.
Well, on the 2014?
I don't know. It doesn't say 2014, so I don't know what I'm looking at. That's my point.
If you go back to the beginning of that PowerPoint, it should tell you it was presented, hopefully, on May 5th, 2014.
It is.
That whole PowerPoint.
2014.
Yes. Okay. So then, I guess the question is, is why would, if we're talking the same numbers, why would it be cheaper today than it was in 14?
Well, as we refined the numbers, we looked at, you know, we got closer to knowing what our reserves were. We didn't know what the construction costs were going to be, you know, we were out to bid at that time. So there was a lot of things that were going on when we started developing the finance impact analysis. And we were, we were developing that finance impact analysis while we were still under bidding, you know, at the bidding part. So after, after the bidding, since that point, since, since back in March or so of 214, we got hard numbers on the wastewater, we got hard numbers on the arsenic. It was all gas estimations. And then we went out and got hard numbers on our reserves and a few other costs in there. And that's why it shows a few dollars less than what it did back in 214. Back in 214, I was indicating at that time that this debt service would probably cost just under $20. Right now, it's, depending on what option it will be, between $16 and $18, $18 and a half dollars. But it's still right there.
Totally.
It's just lowered down a little bit, if we've been able to refine it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I'd make the motion to go with staff's recommendation for option three.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewer. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. You have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to public comment. Give me the public comment section, please.
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
And I have one speaker sheet here from Elena, Amber, Jeff, Katie, and Desine.
Good evening. Forgive me, this is the first time I've ever addressed the council, ever been here. We've formed a little group, and we would like the option of keeping hens in our backyard. And I know I've come up for the council quite a few times in the last few years, and we have some more support, and we're hoping that that could be something that we could do in the future. I'm not quite sure how to go about that or where to go, so I started here. So if you guys want to advise me or ask questions, I'm not quite sure what I should do.
Not ask the city manager, how all the vetting is considered.
Yeah. So, the way, the way for that to proceed is during council comments, if one of the council members wanted to ask for that and be put on a future agenda for consideration, we could start the discussion in that manner.
All right. Thank you. Looks like our others are on the F1 topic, so we'll move on to the consent calendar. On which?
I'd still like to tell you, thank you, Mr. Davenport, for coming this evening to Delta College and speaking. You did a great job. Thank you.
All the city staff and representatives went to the Delta College meeting tonight. To me, it's important that we show up every month, seriously, because we need to get that campus built. We're ready for it, and the city needs that. We deserve that, and our kids deserve it. So I want to thank everybody that showed up. And that being said, I'm sorry if I hurt any feelings tonight, but I'm going to say it and get out of here. Couple of things. On this Eastview project, some of the things I've been reading in the paper and hearsay and whatnot, it really is disturbing when a developer can come in and make statements like, "I'm going to work with the elementary school, and there's nothing you guys can change about it. We're going to get a better deal, but there's nothing you can do." I think that's disingenuous. I don't think he, he might want that or that kind of trend of thought, but I don't think he can do that. I think at the end of the day, you all are going to make that decision on what we do going forward. That being said, that's just one of the issues that I have. The main thing for me, seriously, is the infrastructure of the streets. This city has safe streets. I don't care what, even if someone on the old west side, the streets are so safe compared when we speak in the other cities that you go to. Some of the, some of the streets in this, in this project are smaller than anything that we have. Now, Mark, you've been in public service, so you should know that a kid can run through two sets of cars. Maybe a car coming opposite way might see him if he's on the right side, but a car coming on this side, if we're in smaller streets, are not going to be able to see that kid. Because when I go around my block, I live on Canyon Creek, when I go around the block, we have a lot of kids, but they're wide enough where I can get to the middle of the road, there's no cross traffic. And those kids, and I don't go fast, and I know their kids are playing. That being said, that's not going to, you're not going to have that option in this new settlement, just the way the streets are diagrammed. You've got a 12-foot setback, what kind of lot size you're going to get, and the square footage of the house. Now, I heard that he said that the, the plant calls for 1,800 square foot houses. Then you guys asked him if you put that in writing, and he said, "No." Well, to me, that means he's not sincere. He's not. I don't care what he says or how he says it to you. He's not sincere in what he wants to do for this community. He wants to build, and he wants to put the money in his pocket, and he wants to go. And I, to be honest with you, I don't have patience for people like that. I don't. We need to take public safety first and foremost. And you know what? At the end of the day, you guys can do this. You guys can include this project as it stands, with the cabinet, he can't change anything. He doesn't want to put anything in writing, okay, don't put it in writing. We're going to make you adhere to your general plan, no changes. Hold fast and firm to that. Or you can be realistic and say, "Okay, I understand how this thing is going forward. Maybe we can put 1,500 square foot limit." You know, that's as far as you can go down. Because in all honesty, I've talked to some council members, and I asked them very bluntly about the square footage of the house, because I was told it could be as low as 1,000. It's just too small. I don't care. I mean, it's too small, and you're going to, you're going to get poor individuals into that. And I have to say that they don't deserve a house, because they do. But with the lot size, the street size, you're going to get a collection of kids running in and out, and somebody's going to get hurt. What are you going to do when somebody gets hurt? You're going to, the police are going to start to patrol a little bit more, but it doesn't alter the fact that one kid's already been hurt or killed. And we don't need to take that. We don't need to take that risk. Now, look, I'm not saying this guy is getting preferential treatment. All I'm saying is, I talked to a city council member who told me in the last election, "Wasn't it wonderful that she had a developer buy all of her signs?" I just think that's disingenuous. I asked her who it was. She goes, "Oh, I don't know." You know, I mean, to me, that just reeks. It just reeks. We don't need to go down that path. We need to build a strong community, keep us the way we are. Public safety should come first, period, regardless of what anybody's pocketbook says or wants. We need to take care of our kids as we go forward. And I really honestly feel that you guys would do the right thing at the end of the day when you think about this, Mark, because this is a public safety issue, nothing more. I'm sorry if the developer's offended, nothing I can do about it. That being said, I'm going to thank you for your time. But I also want to just bring one other thing up. My daughter's been in the hospital for the last three months. She's had three surgeries, and we almost lost her, but we didn't. But I started getting my lawn ready for the, for the rationing in January. I started fertilizing when it rained, and I, and I didn't water it until like about three weeks ago. But I was at the hospital, and I came home and my lawn was, it hadn't been, it rained for like six days, and it was drying, so I turned the straight lawn on Thursday. Oh my God, the neighborhood went crazy. They coughed. I came out, put a note on my door. If, I don't water more than twice a week, and I never will, I never will. But I think you guys really need to be a little open-minded, a little, you know...
Jean, your time is up.
I know it is. So what? But I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think we need to, you know, maybe give a little break.
Thanks, Jean. Okay. If you guys can indulge us, we've got one thing ahead of that for consent calendar. We'll go right, jump right back into that. Moving on to the consent calendar. Do you have anybody who has any changes with this? Do you have a motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. A motion by Vice Mayor Payne, second by Councilmember Campion. Okay. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. All right. So we've got unanimous vote on consent.
Before the gentleman gets up here, I know we were given some information last minute. It was just handed to me. I haven't had a chance to read any of this. I'd like to, after this individual speaks, take five, 10-minute breaks so that I have an opportunity to read this. Counsel, are you good with this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, was this fellow going to speak to this right now? Yeah, was this fellow gonna speak just right now?
Yeah. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think we're, you know, we gotta get back in order here. What I would recommend is if you're gonna take a recess to review information that we did at this point in time, then we reconvene, we get back on track and have the staff presentation, questions from council, and then we open the public hearing and have any public testimony on the project.
questions from council, and then we open the public hearing and have any public testimony Do we have anything further from staff on this?
Could I just ask you, gentlemen, what's your question or your comment on the Eastview project?
It's actually, um, it's related to taxes.
on the project. Do we have anything further from staff on this?
Could I just ask you, gentlemen, what's your question or your comment on the Eastview
It has more to do with, you talked about fully targeted.
project?
Exactly.
Without target, you're...
It has more to do with, you talked about fully targeted.
That's a bit, wait, I've got...
Without target, you're... That's a bit, wait, I've got...
That was under public comment. That was under public comment.
Okay, with that, then we'll go ahead and scroll, uh, John, for five minutes, so council Okay, with that, then we'll go ahead and scroll, uh, John, for five minutes, so council will know this information. will know this information. We reconvene at eight forty-five. We reconvene at eight forty-five. All right. The call to the council will now reconvene. The next item is the continued public hearing on the Eastview specific plan annexation, General Plan Amendment, Specific Plan Pre-Zoned, Best Intensive Subdivision Map Development Agreement. Mr. Stewart, you have an additional?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. This evening, we have a little bit of additional information with regard to a MOU between the elementary school district and the applicant, and I'll go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Rudolph, who's been instrumental in helping us to facilitate this.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. A couple of items I wanted to brief you on this evening. So first, as Tony Stewart did indicate, we received news earlier today that the elementary school district and the developer had entered into a memorandum of understanding to provide for funding for the elementary school within the Liberty Ranch subdivision. The city is not a party to this agreement. I provided the city council with a copy of the agreement for your information, and some of the key provisions within this particular document provide that the landowner, the developer, will pay a school mitigation fee for each residential unit within Liberty Ranch of $9,603, and I believe that is somewhere above about $2,02100 above what the state's required impact fee is currently established at. And then, another component of this memorandum of understanding is that, subject to the city forming an infrastructure CFD and subject to city council approval, $3 million would be advanced out of that infrastructure CFD towards the school funding, and upon the advanced funding of this $3 million, the landowner would receive credit towards that advanced funding. There's also some provisions within the MOU that provide for school site improvement and acquisition, and the manner in which the landowner would be reimbursed for the cost of that particular site. As you may recall, we continue the hearing on this matter at the last meeting in order to allow the developer and the school district an opportunity to complete these negotiations, which fortunately were successful. At the last city council meeting, not knowing whether or not these discussions were going to be successful, the developer had recommended some additional language to the development agreement, which related to school funding, and I passed that out at the last meeting. That language is no longer in place, it's been withdrawn. Last evening, still not knowing whether or not we were going to have a memorandum of understanding, today I distributed to the city council two options for language. One, if we came tonight and found ourselves with an MOU in place, and the other, if there was not an MOU. And that, both of those options which I provided last night have been superseded. And what I handed out by email and then at the beginning of the council meeting tonight is proposed language for inclusion in the Liberty Ranch Pre-Anexation Development Agreement. It's a new section, 4.49, supplemental school financing, and it has three simple sections. The first section is that the city acknowledges that the elementary school district and the developer had entered into a memorandum of understanding to provide supplemental financial assistance to the district relating to the construction of the elementary school in Liberty Ranch. The second paragraph, community facility district acknowledges, the city acknowledges that the infrastructure CFD as provided in other sections in the development agreement may be an important funding component for the construction of the elementary school. So not binding on the city in any manner, but it is just an acknowledgement by the city that this would be an important part of the total funding component for the elementary school. And then the last part is joint park, and it says, city further acknowledges that the proposed development and operation of a park adjacent to the school site identified within Phase Three of the project will be an important element providing school playground capacity for the anticipated elementary school within the project. We've had discussions at prior meetings that the school site is slightly below the acreage that is desired by the state, but it is adjacent to a park site. Our contemplation is that, once we get farther down the road with the development of this project, that we would negotiate a joint use agreement with the school district, typical to the manner in which we have entered into joint use agreements with the school district on a variety of other facilities within the community. So this proposed, the proposed language that I handed out this evening is recommended by staff. The developer is in agreement with the supplemental school financing language. The school district has had an opportunity to review this language, made some recommended revisions which have been incorporated into this document. So I think that all of the parties involved, at least in the discussion up to this point, city staff, the developer, and the school district are comfortable with the language that I have presented for your consideration this evening.
Thank you, sir. With the indulgence of the council, I'd like to move back straightforward to the public comments.
Could you open the public?
Yes, a public hearing, thank you. It's been a very long night. Start off with Rick Drager.
Thank you. Just briefly, I'm a civil engineer. I've been working in dams, reservoirs, groundwater hydrology for 30 years, and God willing and for more, I'll be done. Just to get the record straight, I'm neither for nor against the Eastview project, although I live on the east side of Cherokee Lane, directly adjacent to your project. I have a well. One of the things that interests me greatly is groundwater, and I've been watching it go down over the years, but that's not really what I want to talk about. I want to tell you, my boss is on loan to the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act formation. If you're not familiar with what that is, that was signed by Jerry Brown in September 2014, and the basin that we're on is designated as a medium priority, which is second from the top. You're going to get hit, this is more of a heads up than anything, you're going to get hit soon, all of us who have wells. Every well is going to be logged, every well is going to be monitored, and the basin will have to be in balance. Right now, if you look at the maps, it's not, not even by a stretch. The only thing that I would say, and I told you I'd keep this really brief, is that I work in Los Angeles, okay? Everything's paved there. Once you pave something, it becomes very difficult to adjust it. Agriculture is very, very easy to adjust compared to domestic. Ranch you, agriculture uses two to three times as much. You can turn off fields, can't turn off houses. So keep that in careful consideration as you go into this project, because once you make my property value a whole lot better, you can't go backwards on it, okay? You won't be able to step back and take those, all those acres and say, well, gosh, that portion of the basin, we can't regulate as much, we can't turn it fallow, we can't turn it into a dry crop anymore. Okay? That's all I'm saying. And thank you for your time, and I do appreciate your consideration on this. I know this thing has been tabled many, many times, but I know that you guys are giving a lot of thought, and that's really important.
Thank you, sir. Al Baldwin.
Al Baldwin, a concerned citizen of Galt, and this is a wonderful city of character, and it's getting better all the time. But when there's a dark spot that appears, and it's going to affect Galt, I want to at least say something about it, because it's not very positive for Galt. Apparently, there's some vicious rumors about properties going down, homes aren't going to increase in value if this project goes through. And, you know, it's putting a very bad light on many people on the east side. Now, I'm going to bring this up, because maybe some people are scared to or don't want to. If it's going to hurt Galt, I'm going to bring it up, and I'm going to at least have it discussed. The developer that's working with this project is a very sincere, in my opinion, developer, very concerned about the city, very concerned about the school district, and is willing to negotiate and work around many so-called problems, but I call them opportunities, so that he or she who's ever in charge will make sure it's done in a proper way. And everything I've said has been done, and it's still being done. This negativity of threats about homes going down, you know, the people on the planning commission approved this, and there may have been one or two that apparently didn't like it, but to go out and start stabbing, and if you, I call it maybe, the east side saying, your homes are going to go down if this goes through, is not very good. And, you know, if you're voting for this on the planning commission, and even if you didn't vote correctly for it the way you'd like to see it, it does reflect a negativity on Galt, because they've discussed it, they've gone through it, they've done everything that they can do, and sometimes people have sour grapes about it, so they want to pursue it even more. Galt, one heck of a great city, it's growing, it's very positive, there's a lot of great people in this town, and they're getting more. The school district is extremely good, it's growing, it's very positive, and they're willing to work with you and anybody else they can, just like the developer is. I just wanted to spell this, this thing is on Facebook, it's on the TV, if you want to look at it that way, it's Facebook and other areas. So you're going to hear people talking negatively about this, but Galt is not a negative community. It's a very positive one, and if you live here, you'd understand that. It's growing, you've heard different things are going to happen to our main streets, it's growing on the east side, a lot of developments going in over there. If it wasn't going in over there, you'd say, well gee, this town is dying. Well, it's not, it's just beginning to live. So why don't we just get behind it and do the best we can, as well we can. This is a wonderful little city that's growing, and if you want to live in a nice environment where you have great police, great representation in the council, great different clubs you can join, and parks you can go to, and schools you can go to, why don't you just come on down to Galt? It's not that far away from Sacramento, and they're always looking for wonderful people. So come on down and test the waters. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Karen Schaller.
Good evening, Mayor Cruz, city council members, and city leadership team. I wanted to take a few minutes to update you, and Mr. Rudolph already started that process. On March 23rd, I had come along with our Galt School District team, and we conveyed our objectives to you in terms of what would be considerations to achieve a new elementary school with the Eastview Development. At that meeting, there were two areas about moving forward that I brought to you. One of them was that, for us to make this work, it was really important that our district, the city, and the developer better coordinate and communicate. And secondly, that we really, that to convey that our district had the intent from day one to reach a solution that really could work for the developer, the city, and our district together. But maybe most importantly is that we reach a solution that would benefit the future children and families that would result from this Eastview project. So as Mr. Rudolph announced, today, we did reach an agreement with the developer. And I want to thank you, city council members, for providing additional time and also allowing city staff to help us work together with the developer to accomplish this agreement. Secondly, I want to recognize Steve Rudolph, city attorney, and also Eugene Palazzo, because as it was getting closer to reach that agreement, I know that people were working day and night, including weekends, so that we could get this done, and I know that there are people in the audience, including representatives of the developer that are here, that helped to do that as well. So I want to thank city staff, council members, development, and our team members for helping to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schaller. Addison Covert.
Mayor Cruz, and members of the council, city staff, Addison Covert, attorney for the school district, will be very happy to hear that I think Dr. Schaller did such an excellent job, along with Mr. Rudolph, in presenting to you an update with respect to where the school district is in regard to the project, in regard to the memorandum of understanding, and the proposed language for the development agreement, but unless you have any specific questions for me, I'm just going to wrap my comments up at that point, and wish you best of luck with the project.
Addison, I do have one question. On the, under the, under the agreement, under the first item, it talks about state funding, the state funding program, and there, it says in the event that the state does not approve the site, I mean, is there a real question as to the approval, approvability of this site?
The state has, I'll answer that question without giving you a yes or no, because it's a maybe. The state has a process where they go through an initial inspection of property, and that has occurred, and as a result of that initial inspection, the state has said, this is an approvable site. But having an approvable site and having an approved site are, of course, two different things as far as state law is concerned. At some point down the line, an entire series of studies and analyses will be conducted by the school district in consultation with the city and with the developer to make sure that site does meet all of the state standards for the location of an elementary school facility. And those analyses will result in studies and reports and recommendations, which will eventually go to the school board, who will then be required to make a series of specific findings, then transmit those studies and those findings to the state. They'll be independently reviewed by the state, and following that process, the school district anticipates, the state will then say, yes, we've now approved the site, and it's appropriate for you to go ahead and purchase that site and install a school on the site. But the best information we have to date is that it is an approvable site, subject to the concerns we've expressed to you on numerous occasions already. And does that get to the heart of it?
Yes, it does, it does. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. President?
What would happen in the future if it was not an approved site?
I think that would depend in part upon what was the basis for it not being approved. If it was something that could be readily fixed, and the parties, the city and the property owner at that point, and the school district were in agreement that that fix was feasible and doable, the state agreed, it would be fixed. And there could be a variety of factors that could contribute to that. If it turned out that it was something that couldn't be fixed, then it would likely be the case that the school district and city staff and the developer would work together to see what kind of an alternative layout could be agreed upon, that could be proposed in either the current phase that the school is located in, or a prior phase, or a future phase, and then bring it back to you for reevaluation and reconsideration as to the best way to modify the plan for the project so de facto that the state and the parties had identified at that point, that couldn't be cured on that location, could then be somehow corrected.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sherri Daly.
Hello, Sherri Daly, I live in the city. I'm getting over Eugene's cold now, so I just wanted to come and reiterate what the planning commission did recommend. Upon unanimous vote, it was recommended that the council let know more than 18% of the homes, the lot sizes, to be below our current development code, so I wanted to set the record straight there with what planning commission did and what they said. And if we're getting pushback from residents on the east side, I think they have a right to. They want what Al was talking about, they want the same community that we raised our kids in, they want what we have now, which is what our development code looks like. And I'm here tonight to support the mayor and the vice mayor in doing what I think they know is right. Our town right now has an array of housing, a choice of sizes. We don't have row houses, the small lots and small houses. This developer hasn't committed to, he's given market projections which are like water, so it's up to the council to shape what the future of Galt looks like, and I think we're happy with it. I think Barbara's let us through some of the worst economic times the city has had, and I, it's heartbreaking that her legacy, I love the garden, I think we'll remember that forever, but I would hate to see her legacy to be to change 180 degrees how this town builds out, because she likes it, she likes the way it is, Mark likes the way it is. So I think we have an opportunity tonight to show some leadership, and I don't have Bill Willschwartz as developer, but this is the same developer that funneled money through an LLC on 11th Street to run campaigns here in town, came here just two weeks ago and tried to put handcuffs on all of you. Said he didn't want your input, didn't trust your decision-making, and held the schools hostage for another two weeks. So he's doing business, he needs to, but your business is to defend this town, to make sure that it looks like it does now moving forward. Now, I love Barbara's accent, by the way. My dad's from Missouri, my mom's from Oklahoma, and my dad's birthday would have been today. So I'll give you kind of an old-fashioned analogy. I'm not asking the bride to run away from the altar, but please, ask him to put a tux on, buy your ring, buy your family dinner. Rubber hits the road here, this development's not going anywhere. If you put in curves on how many small lots there can be, if you ask him to commit on paper to lot, to house sizes, it's not going away. We can have our cake and eat it too. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we have in the way of public comments. Council, discussion?
Well, you know, I've probably had more to say about this project than any other council member up here, and I am encouraged that we have interest in development in the community, but I am extremely discouraged by the way this project has been developed. If you recall, we found out about this a little over a year ago, that they were working on plans and so forth. The planning commission, nor the city council, were requested for substantive input. I think there was one workshop with council and the planning commission, which was ill-attended. I don't think there was a majority of either board. That was the extent of early communication. What it appears as though is that we have had a project developed, either with the consent of staff or not, but I did not have any idea of the magnitude of changes that this project was proposing in terms of our own development standards and our own general plan. Not only lot sizes, but front yard setbacks down to 12, 15 feet. We have that only in one other location that I can think of, and that's a senior project Mr. Guthridge's. And we have narrower streets in that particular project, they're private streets as well. This project has some of the narrowest streets for a subdivision in the entire city. The standard street width in this city is 50 feet, and has been 50 feet for years. There are a couple of subdivisions that I can think of that are composed mainly of cul-de-sacs and maybe 15 homes on each cul-de-sac where they use the 40-foot standard. The 40-foot standard, and this is a 42-foot, I think, for the vast majority of the mileage out there in the residential area, because it's the minor streets, you can't get two cars parked on the street and have a bicyclist go down that road without being in traffic. That's just the way it is. And that is for probably 80% of all the streets in these subdivisions. We haven't even discussed, we haven't even pulled out a subdivision map to look at this stuff at any level of detail. So I'm a little, I don't understand how we get to making those types of changes when we've had policies that have worked for this city for 50 years, and we've tweaked them. We did a major update to the development code a year ago, two years ago, where we codified everything, restated exactly what our expectations were in terms of zoning. Your R2 was a 5,500 square foot lot, 55 feet in width. R1C was 65 feet, 6,500 square feet. Your R1B is 7,070 feet, and your R1A is 8,080-foot of street frontage. These are all standards that have worked for this city, and every other developer that's come before the city has abided by those regulations. I don't see the justification for privilege, and that's what this is. It's a privilege and special circumstances and special treatment, which is what exactly it is. If we allow this project to go forward in its current form, if this subdivider were to come back and comply with what our zoning is, what our general plan says, I would have no problem, assuming, you know, we can come to terms with issues like schools. I have other grave concerns that we are privatizing our parks, or otherwise, public facilities available to the public, and giving this developer credit, monetary credit, for private facilities that benefit only the residents of his subdivision and to the exclusion of every other resident. They have the opportunity to not only use their facilities, but they also have the ability and will impact, like the aquatic center. It is already an impacted facility, and now we'll be adding literally hundreds, hundreds and hundreds of additional potential users. The developer says that he's provided all the parkland we've asked for. Well, there's still parkland that is required based on the acreage and the number of persons per household out there, and I think it was about eight acres, but that really hasn't been discussed, and it should be. And I think, more importantly, we've modified what, and are going to embark on a process whereby this developer can come in to Public Works, pay for his wastewater treatment fee, and only that fee, where in the past, you had to buy the entire building permit in order to get that connection fee paid, and tie up probably close to, well, I don't know, the development agreement was changed last week after he realized that he made an error, so he went by villages instead of phases, so now we're probably, depending upon the size of the phase, which are very small, we're looking at probably close to 60, maybe 70% of all of those lots could be prepaid on the wastewater treatment plant to the disadvantage of every other developer in this city. And that doesn't, that doesn't really mean much unless it becomes crucial if we have to do a plant expansion, or if there's some other reason that there would be a limitation on the amount of connections available to the residents. I mean, these are, I think, fairly big-ticket items, and I know I've talked in detail about other items that I feel are equally important, but I just cannot, in good faith for this community, because I believe there will be problems out there. We're talking about- We're talking about, you know, like I said, privatization of parks never been done before on this scale. You're talking literally thousands of people that are going to live out here. And I see it as an experiment that we should not entertain.
Okay.
Well, let me give a different perspective of the project. First of all, our general plan has projected that we will build out at around 50,000, and this is well within those projections. And we've gone over so many details, the parks and how it benefits both people or both cases. It's been a give and take whether we're talking about schools or whatever. Also, I would say that we're, times have changed. I sat on SACOG for a long time, and they're talking about better use of the land. In other words, not such big lots. And then today, we're looking at drought issues. And, you know, I have a corner lot that I wish I didn't have right now, since I'm trying to find a way to landscape it and keep my water bill down. But another perspective, I have to say, I came to Galt as a construction superintendent, and I built a subdivision here, Sterling Oaks, and ultimately moved here because I liked the town and I liked the positive attitude that I saw. I have to say that as a construction person that had to deal with the building department, found a negative attitude towards builders. Whereas someone that worked every day with these people, I saw a lot of jobs provided. I saw carpenters, plumbers, even go on to landscapers, the impact that it can, that these jobs, housing can make on a community. And we've seen when housing stops, what it can do to the economy. So, I have a little different perspective, having worked with all these people and saw how when houses started, there's a real positive attitude among the subcontractors. And they would watch every day to see if there's going to be new releases, so they'd know if they'd be able to pay for their families. So, that's a different perspective I have as far as the project itself. I think we've worked out the details, we've given and we've taken, and I think you've got to have some respect for these developers with deep pockets. They're making investments. I've seen developers, I worked for one in Texas, that was the professional builder of the year, one year, and with the economy sunk, it filed for Chapter 11 and ultimately Chapter 13. So, developers, yeah, they're trying to make money, but they put risk out there too. And if you think they have deep pockets, there's a limit to their deep pockets. I just think that we need to try to do the, to be fair, do the best thing for our city. I think we are trying to do that. Galt has been progressing. We're proud of where we're going. I think our schools will profit from this. I think it's good to have new blood come into town. You know, I have mine, but I'm willing to share it with other people in the future. So, I hope this project will pass. I think that whatever we decide is going to say something to the rest of the community, the rest of the world, state anyway.
Counselor here?
Oh, I'm somewhere in between the two. I address some of my concerns. I shared a number of my concerns, and I'm very appreciative of the fact that we've reached an agreement with the schools. That was a very large concern of mine for the developer to reach an agreement with the schools. I really appreciate they've put forth that effort and that we have come to a resolution regarding that. There's many things, I mean, I absolutely believe this is where we should develop. I believe in the annexation of the 500 acres. I think we should move forward with that. I have some issues with the developer agreement, and I'll share some of the concerns that I still have regarding the developer agreement. I do not believe that private facilities should be paid for essentially by the developer receiving half credit for those private facilities from the community, because as far as I'm concerned, when you provide half credit to the developers, the rest of the community is losing. Those facilities will not be taking the impact of those children off of the rest of the community. So, I absolutely agree with Councilman Campion in the fact that this development does not provide for playing fields, it does not provide for recreational activity, I mean, the passive parks that are being built there. So, I do not believe that we should be getting half credit for private facilities. If the private facilities are going to be built within that community, then, and they're going to be only for the use of that community, then that community needs to bear the cost of those private facilities. So, I would like to see that changed. I've voiced that before. The other issue that I, I share the concerns that the roads appear to need to be really narrow for our construction zone. I also have some concerns. I mean, I understand that times have changed. I also agree that we have to lessen our footprint on the environment. Lot sizes being smaller makes, actually makes good sense to me. I think that that's where a lot of people are headed, but there is a very, as far as I'm concerned, poor mix of housing in this development. Development has a very large, was it over 60% of the development has lots that are under the size of our current housing code. So, we have what really do appear to be much smaller lots, so I would like to see a better mix, I mean, 60%. It just seems like there could be some sort of give and take in the way that the small map is. So, the other, so those are basically my concerns regarding approving, approving this project. If, I absolutely could approve the annexation, I could approve a large map plan. When the statement's made that the Planning Commission approved this development, they actually did not weigh in at all on the developer agreement, and they did not approve the small map plan. Correct?
Sure.
My understanding? Okay. So, the Planning Commission really didn't weigh in on what I think probably are two of the biggest, most crucial items in this, in this plan. I think the plan has some really wonderful parts to it. I think it has some great concepts. I'm not concerned that it's going to destroy the fabric of our community. I just think that we need a mix of housing. And there is no guarantees in any of this what size housing is going to be built, what type of housing is going to be built. I don't, I don't think we should have composition roofs, and I know it says composition or cement or the tile. And when it comes before us, each development, those issues can be decided. But I just know that when each, when our last large annexation of this, when we did the east, when we did the east area annexation, it wasn't perfect. There were mistakes. They had to come back and fix different things. But I think everybody was really thoughtful, and I think in the long run, the council members that approved that project, who I don't know that any of them are still with us today, we're proud of that development. And I really want to know that 20 years from now, when this development is building out and coming to a completion, that I likewise can be proud of that development and say that we played a part in making sure that it was a community that we all could be proud of. And I just am very concerned about some guarantees about the size of housing, about some sort of mix of housing. And I'm not saying all houses have to be 2,500 square feet. I understand that I've reached this point in my life that 1,500 square foot house for some people is perfectly acceptable. But I just think there needs to be a mix and some sort of a guarantee on, in the long run, what this will look like in the mix of housing. Because when the east area plan was done, there was such a glut of small houses that the council had to come back and rezone the whole thing. And actually, under this developer agreement, the way I read it, we wouldn't be able to do that. So, we wouldn't be able to go back and fix the mistakes if we started getting into this and thought, oh, gosh, this isn't working. So, those are my concerns about the project. There's absolutely things that I could pass tonight, and there's areas, specifically the small map plan, that I still think have, that I still have problems with in the way that, that we're down to the fact of having a small map plan. When we worked on the general plan, you know, it was always, you have the general plan, you have the specific plan, and then, you know, when they go to build, we'll have a small map plan. And the fact that we're being asked to approve all of that ahead of time without, I think sometimes, even though you can say we spent 10 hours talking about this, and I can probably say I've spent double that reading it, I'm trying to understand it, and it's a really huge decision. And I think that everybody needs to take it very seriously, because we really are talking about the next 20 years. And we're going to have other developments and other projects come before us. I do agree with Councilman Campion that it's not just paying the sewer hook-up fees that should give you priority or give it, what more am I going to set aside? No, not set aside.
A will serve letter.
A will serve letter, yes. A reserve.
Guarantee.
I think that the whole building, I mean, I think once they pay the whole cost of, pull the whole permit and pay the whole cost of it, at that point, I don't have any problem. Because I understand that they need some sort of guarantee. But I think we need guarantees also, and I know it's a one-year, so I'm not as concerned about that as I am about the parks issue and the small map.
Okay.
Well, a couple of things I have concern about. And the first one is everybody keeps talking about lot sizes. And one of the reasons, one of the things I had the development department do is bring up a bunch of our previous subdivisions on a planned area. And a couple of things that kind of concerned me was, we're concerned about lot sizes and home sizes. Yet, in 1991, we approved as a council, and I'm not talking the specific, the councils have passed, a planned development where we deviated from our original plan and went to what they call a Zlot, which is a zero clearance lot, which means John Doe's wall right up against their neighbor's backyard. So, to say that we're stepping out of bounds is not really accurate.
To the extent that that was what they called the PD zone, which was in our existing development code, yeah, it was consistent with the code.
Well, they made modifications to make that work, is what I'm trying to say.
No, it was done under the PD zone. The developer came forward and wanted to do, instead of having the house sit with the five-foot setback, it sat at property line, and then there were easements, reciprocal easements, one in the front, one in the back.
But was that not approved by the city?
Yes.
Okay, that's my point I'm trying to cross.
Under the PD.
Okay. Going to your issue with, that was brought up thus far as the streets. You're right, public safety is first and foremost on my mind for our children. And to be honest with you, in the northeast area, the streets are way too wide, way too wide. It's, it becomes a road race, if you wish. Looking at the development plans, and I went through all three maps, I was very impressed with the fact that they slowed traffic down using traffic circles. They're effective, they do the job. So, to tell me that a child's going to run in front of a vehicle, yeah, that potential's there, but I can tell you how many vehicle accidents I've taken at the corner of Perillion and Benetoke, which is a wider street. And a child was involved in at least three of those instances. So, that kind of negates that. I think it's a good project. I do have some concerns. The park issue is a serious concern for me because privatizing a park, a public park, it doesn't rub right with me. The issues with the pool, to me, it's a non-issue. It's just my personal feeling, and it's a non-issue at this point in time. We're not asking Mike Gutridge, we're not asking Elliot, anyone else to step up a favor. We want to buy a new pool. No, we're going after this one. Again, I agree with Vice Mayor Payne because they're deep pockets. That's not a good reason to go forward with a project like that and asking him to do that type of an act. So, I mean, at this point, I like what's provided. I am concerned about the number of small lots, but again, these are new times, and we've got a lot of empty nesters who are looking to move into homes that aren't huge and lots they don't have to maintain. That's just my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, before you would entertain any motion, I recommend if there's no other public testimony tonight, that you close the public hearing.
If there is no further comment from the public? Ah, we do have. Yes, sir? Could you step up here, sir, so we can hear you, get you on mic?
I moved to Galt probably about 25 years ago. I like the farm community, I enjoy the farm community, I enjoy the schools. One of the first things I teach, I taught for 39 years. I'm currently a faculty in the Galt School District for the last eight years. And I have all my three grandkids who went through the Galt school system. And before going to the Galt system, I considered to have plenty of real private school. And when I went through and looked at all the scores of our Galt schools, they were above the record. So, I applaud Galt schools. My concern is I keep hearing that developers, 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 you know, coming, there are other developers coming. I wonder why so many people always say it takes Galt forever to build anything. When you look like at the Walmart, I think that Walmart must have taken about four years in order to get that Walmart established. You look at Elk Grove, I don't want to be a massive city like Elk Grove, but I've gone to some of their council meetings. It's phenomenal. Now, these developers, I think we met way back in December when I came here one time for a meeting, if not before that. Then it was postponed, it was, no, I think it was in September or August, and there was just talk about meeting with the people out there again in December and possibly breaking ground in April. And here we are in April, and now a decision has been made. And I think the growth of Galt relies on the city council. And I think our city council doesn't look at some of the characteristics of why we do need the growth. Farming is not what it used to be. You can't now make money on farms. Sure, somebody says, well, there's a lot more houses, but that's some more money in your pocket as well. So, it's a give and take, you know, of quality. But I think these developers have been more, more than considerate of our city council here. And I think, you know, sure, if there's questions, maybe that's something that can be worked out, but I think Galt needs to become more progressive. And all I hear say is, well, it takes Galt forever. It takes Galt forever. What other developers have we had? What other developers have we had recently that have made any developments in Galt?
Actually, we have a couple in the works.
In the works? But I've been here 25 years, and the only new things that I've seen are the new things that have grown along Twin Cities Road. Those are the only actual things that I've really seen that have really made growth. Anyway, I'm hoping that the project is successful and that people vote for it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't fill out a speaker slip because I think as an applicant, I get a chance to say something, so I'm going to try. And I'm not going to go down the list. I took notes of all the comments, and I appreciate some of the good thoughts that you've all said, and I hope we can earn your vote tonight. And I'm going to try and re-characterize a few things, because I think there's been a number of misstatements and mischaracterizations, and it may just be misinformation. I think a leading concern here seems to be on house sizes. I think there's, some people have a concern about the lot sizes. But, you know, in the general plan, it requires, it identifies 366 condos and apartments, and I decided not to put this in. You have them in the MDH, MDR zone or something. We put in some because it was actually staff that wanted us to do that. We put in some because it was actually staff that wanted us to do that. There is, there is a balance. I mean, it's geometry. If I make bigger lots, I'm not going to get a number of lots, and I have costs and expenses to amortize. And really, the only way I can do that is to make even smaller lots on the other side. So, and there are a lot of good reasons for small lots. And actually, I was surprised that you said something about the water requirements because that has come up to play. I was doing a subdivision in Palm Springs several years ago, three, four years ago, and it was actually in Palm Desert, a ranch in Mirage. And they wanted me to keep reducing my lots because they had zoning that says half-acre lot sizes. And when I explained to them, well, seventy percent of that lot's going to be landscaped and be watered, and said, hey, let's rethink that. So, there is, there is good reasons not to have big lots. But more importantly, there were some questions here about home sizes. And you realize, of course, that the smallest home in our marketing report is eighteen-hundred square feet. Now, you've asked me to commit to that. It's a little hard to commit to that, but if I don't build, or if the builders don't build to eighteen-hundred square feet, I'm not going to get the value, therefore, I can't sell the lots. So, the project stagnates. We don't want that to happen. And we've hired these professionals, independent, to tell us what they think is a reasonable-sized home to build there. So, the smallest was programmed at eighteen-hundred, the average size is twenty-four-hundred, and the largest is thirty-two-hundred. So, that's a broad range. There was also some questions about, do we have enough diversity of lot sizes? Well, I have five lot sizes. And we don't, we're not home builders. We don't necessarily fix the prices, but we have to anticipate them like we anticipate lot sizes and square footage. And the smallest, cheapest starter house is going to start above three-hundred thousand dollars. I can't imagine that bringing down the values of the East Side. And more importantly, we're trying to make it affordable. So, I do have from five thousand, fifty-five, to six thousand, to sixty-five, to seven thousand, square foot lots. If you look at the prices associated with those, you'll see that that's a lifespan. That gives first-time homebuyers the chance to buy in, to the extent they can afford three-hundred thousand, but that's what it is, they can move up, and then they can move back down. So, I do have that range there. So, I just wanted to touch on that for a moment. Then there was this discussion about parks. Look, you can build parks or I can pay fees. We're building some parks and we're paying some fees. Take the fees, build a swimming pool. If you don't want to, tell me to build more parks. I'm actually building more parks anyway. There's this question, are these private parks? Are they not? I agreed at the last hearing to open them up. So, in reality, they're parks for the public to use. I don't get credit until the subdivision comes around and dedicates them to you, and then I have a moratorium of, like, what, a year or two before, I can't, I'm not even maintaining them. You want to maintain them because you want them completely for yourself. I think I've given you a great deal of parks. So, I don't think I'm being elitist.
Were those, is that a memorial license in the development agreement?
Yeah, should have been.
I haven't seen any changes.
Well, you know, a lot of people haven't seen a lot of things in this plan, and I've been here for four years, we've been public for three years, we've been in this process for two years.
This is just the last meeting, Sam. So, this is just the last meeting, you're saying?
Agreed.
And I, I haven't seen any.
But I've been here for three years and we have been in the public. The documentation has been in the public for over two years, but yet, no one knows what's going on in my plan for some reason.
I'd like to ask staff a question, if that's okay? Tony, do you have the changes to the development agreement?
I believe Steve's looking at that right now.
And just for clarification, Mr. Veltre, I actually don't have concerns about the parks that will, that, you know, you want to restrict the use on. What I really, when I'm talking about private facilities, I'm talking about they're receiving half-credit for things like the private HOA maintained facility. The fact is, is that I think if that facility is going to be a private facility like the HOA facility, then it needs to be paid for completely out of the development and not getting half-credit from the rest of the citizens. And I absolutely agree. Paying fees in Lewis Parks is absolutely acceptable because we can use those fees to upgrade other facilities, such as building a swimming pool or doing whatever. I mean, I don't ever expect that you're going to build a swimming pool there, and if you did, it'd be, I actually came to the conclusion that I really didn't want you to build a swimming pool because you would ask for half-credit for it, and I don't think the community has half-credit on a swimming pool for you. So, I'd rather you pay the whole fee back and let us build the swimming pool if we decide we need it.
I wasn't directing that comment here.
No, I just want to make sure that we're clear about what I was, I wasn't talking about the parks that will eventually be dedicated to. I was really talking about the private facilities.
Okay, but just to clarify that a little bit, we, and I don't know if it's been memorialized with the DA, but I consented to remove the community center and to build, still build those two parks and at no cost, and maintain them at no cost to the city and to be public. And so, there are no.
With no restrictions, no restrictions as well?
No restrictions. But let's talk about restrictions for a moment because your code allows half-credit.
I understand that.
Okay. So, I didn't, I wasn't trying to pull that.
I agree. No, it says it may be granted, it doesn't say it has to be.
Oh, I get that, I asked.
And I understand asking for it. You've removed the community center?
Completely.
You're not wanting to build it?
We were called elitist.
I didn't call you elitist.
I didn't know the community center had been removed.
Do we have answers?
We were described having an HOA and a private facility as being elitist. We can go back and look at the case.
Mr. Rubel?
So, if I could answer the Councilmember Campion's question. So, the first question related to the park sites that are going to be held by the developer for a period of time and what the development agreement currently provides, and this is in section four-point-four-point-six, is that prior to the acceptance of the offer of dedication, landowner must ensure the park meets city standards in effect at the time of park construction. That was a change over the last few weeks. Landowner shall be entitled to credits against the city parkland dedication and improvement ordinance at the time of the offer of dedication. So, that's before the city takes possession, right? And the construction of the improvements, provided however that the amount of credit shall be limited to the amount of park fees allocable to such parks. So, we did raise with the developer the option of not being able to take credits until the offer of dedication was accepted, and my understanding was that was not acceptable, so that is not in the draft of this agreement. And as it relates to the.
Is that incorrect, Sam?
I'm going to wait for my attorney to get up here. I'd like to practice something I know nothing about.
So, as it relates to the credit for the private facilities, where that is embedded in the development agreement is in attachment J, which is a chart that shows the park open space trail requirements. And that chart, it shows the private recreational area, three acres to receive fifty percent credit. So, that's where that is present in the development agreement. If there's concessions that the developer would like to offer, we'd be happy to make the changes.
One second. So, there, I just, this is the first I've heard that there were private facilities that have been removed. So, you've removed the private HOA maintained community center. What other, have you removed any of the other private facilities? So, there'll still be a private recreation area for the development? Okay.
There's not going to be public.
For the public. Oh, it's not going to be private. No, just.
Would it be like some two parks?
Okay. So, what made you decide, can I just ask you?
The comments that I heard.
So, will there be an HOA?
Oh, yes.
Okay. You're still going to have an HOA.
Well, we have, we have a lot of, uh, free land, landscape areas.
Mr. Veltre, could you grab that mic, please?
I'm sorry, I asked the question, but I just want to, I just want to, yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I just want to understand. So, so you're, there's still going to be an HOA to maintain some of the public properties or the?
Yes, there has to be, really, because if you remember, we have this street that connects the questionable park to the park by the school to another questionable park. Along that street, we enhanced your road factor and built a parkway between the sidewalks. That parkway is the landscape cost that we want to maintain. And then we have lots of little spots of landscaping and things of that nature that we'll want to take care of, plus there are perimeter walls and things like that that we have to deal with. So, if there is an HOA, there'll be a fee to those people to maintain that stuff above and beyond.
So, this development, so Steve, is this development not part of the, so it won't have a landscape district? Lighting and landscape district? I mean, the other areas of the community, those kinds of things, and we have lots of those kind of walkway, parkways that are maintained by lighting and landscape. Is there, I mean, I thought there was.
So, the contemplation is that we would have a service CFD. So, we talked about that during the workshop, the fact that the developer has agreed to either annex to the CFD two thousand, from two thousand and five, that it's exclusively for public safety, or an alternate CFD that has broader purposes, which could, which would include common area maintenance, streetlight maintenance, it could also include a mechanism for public safety up to the same level, tax level that is currently in the CFD two thousand and five. So, that is, that is a subsequent discussion we'll have to have with the council, assuming that the project is approved, as to whether or not you desire for this developer to annex to the two thousand and five district, or you want to create a new district to cover at least this project area that would have broader purposes and what those purposes would be. So, that would take the place of what, the type of maintenance that is typically in the landscape and lighting districts.
The only concern I have, Mr. Veltre, is that there have, we had a community prior that had an HOA, and the HOA went belly up and, you know, then the city had to step in and assume all of the maintenance and requirements with basically, you know, a limited amount of funding, no funding, right, for the rest of the community. So, there's always that concern in my, so I, so I was asking about, I didn't know what, I mean, I thought the primary reason for the HO, the HOA was, was for this, like, the community center.
Well, that really was the primary reason, but there were other issues throughout that we were taking care of. You know, I've heard that before, and that is a risk. It's not a risk that happens very often. In our case, such a large project, I think it would be very difficult for this HOA to go belly up.
Well, people have to be willing to step up and continue it and maintain it. I mean, you know, HOAs have their own, you know, their own, they're their own creature, right? Some people love them, some people hate them.
They will be able to disorganize it, if that's a word, written into their agreements and the disclosure statement used by a home. If there is an HOA, we have to deal with it. We, as the developers, go through master HOA formation process and identify the cost and all that. In this particular case, this is not an expensive HOA.
Well, not a big community center out.
And going to the pool.
Yeah.
We're concerned about this thing. I probably should let.
Okay. I had everything there was to do, and then I'll just grant you one. No problem.
All right. Mayor, members of the council, Bill Abbott, wanted to pick up on the discussion as to the timing of the offer of dedication on the two parks that are going to be held and maintained by the developer until such time as is appropriate for the city. And when it became appropriate for the city to take that, we added language into the DA that said that that would have to be brought up to the standards that the park was supposed to be, so it wouldn't be worn out, it would be rooted standards. The issue on the offer of dedication and the payment of fees when it's followed, it's under your subdivision ordinance, which is a fairly standard ordinance in California, and the subdivider goes to file the final map. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong on this. The developer has to either dedicate land or pay fees. So, if we set aside land for a park and you say also pay fees, essentially for that subdivision, we're paying double fees. We've reserved land for public use and we have to pay full fees because that's what your ordinance says. So, what we wanted to do was get the credit, get the credit for the offer of dedication for this property that's going to become public property, and then we were going to pay fees with all the other subdivision parcels in accordance to your standards. Otherwise, if you say, you're telling us you have to pay full fees and reserve the land, and I don't know how we account for that at the end of the day by the time we go through the subdivision. So, what I tried to do was conform, the reason we pushed back was we, you know, essentially it was a double, double take in terms of your quinbi accuracy. So, our proposal was, we will maintain it so it's at no expense to the city. When it becomes ready for a public property, we'll bring, we'll bring it to the standards that that park should have been in, and all we want is a credit on the quinbi. And as the other subdivisions, we're going to be paying the fees and the city spends the fees however determined the minimum is spent. Otherwise, we end up paying double for that subdivision.
No, I actually have to talk to the city manager and the, I had dropped my concern over the parks that will eventually be public and getting half-credit upfront. The reason I had dropped my concern is because you guys, because the developer was going to pay for the maintenance of those parks. So, those parks are not, will eventually be public parks. I mean, they'll really be public parks upfront. I understand, they're public parks. And they're going to maintain the payment of, the maintenance of them up until the time we take that case, we live up that case.
And if I could just reinforce the point that Sam made, is I don't believe the DA by any means compelled the city to give us a credit. Staff explained to you, under your ordinance, it's optional for the city to give credit for private facilities. So, we didn't change the city ordinance, you processed it, but that issue's off the table in light of.
Because there are no private facilities.
Right. All right, thank you, sir. Do I have anything further from the public? Then the public meeting is closed, and I will open it back up to council to have a motion. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if you desire to entertain motions on the front of the staff report this evening, you'll see for the, in order to fully approve this project, it will require two regular meetings, and so for this first meeting, there are four items that we have, staff has recommended that you consider for action, and I recommend that you take those items separately. First motion, if you desire to entertain the motion, would be to adopt the resolution certifying EIR, adopting findings of fact and statements of overriding considerations, adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Eastview Pacific Plan Project.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I will make the motion. I think this is a good project. I think we've, we're never going to make it perfect to satisfy everybody. I think we've tried on both sides, so I'm going to move the first item on there.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second?
I really need to understand. Now, I don't know, would you clarify? Please clarify.
Number one, do you adopt the resolution certifying the environmental impact report, adopting the findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations, adopt the mitigation monitoring and report program for the Eastview Pacific Plan Project.
So, this, just as clarification, the approval of the environmental document does not approve any element of the project. In order to then move forward and approve any element of the project, you would have to have first certified the environmental document. So, that is, that is the first motion. So, basically, by adopting this motion, you are determining that you feel that the environmental analysis for this project is sufficient, that the document adequately represents the environmental impacts of the proposed development. There are certain impacts that cannot be mitigated, and so those are embodied within a statement of overriding consideration. There are things that can be mitigated, and to that effect, they are contained as mitigation measures in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. So, that, that's the essence of the first motion.
Motion?
I'll second that motion.
Can I have a second? Councilmember Hewer, call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. So, number one on that is approved unanimously. Moving on to number two is adopt a resolution approving annexation of five-hundred-and-four acres. Correct?
I'll move.
Do I have a motion by Vice Mayor Payne? Do I have a second? Do I have a second? I will second that then. Call for the vote, please.
Even.
Just the annexation.
Just the annexation.
Just the annexation.
That's not what the rest of.
Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
Aye.
Council, Mayor Cruz?
Aye. All right, that's unanimous as well. Moving on to number three, introduce an ordinance approving the proposed pre-zoning for the Eastview specific plan project. Wait full reading and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption. Do I have a motion?
So move.
I have a motion, motion by Vice Mayor Payne.
Is there, um, uh, clarification, an explanation that you'd like to make on that?
Tony, do you want to provide some, uh, information on that?
So that we all understand.
The reason for the pre-zoning is because we are accessing property, we need to pre-zone the property. And the pre-zoning would be consistent with the general plan and the specific plan designations here. So the, uh, the LDR, the, now the MDR that we've been discussing, the high density as well as the open space, uh, school sites and whatnot. So that would all be part of the pre-zoning that you'd be approving or recommending.
Okay, so also, I'm sorry, so also by clarification, I just wanted to point out that by acting on this pre-zone, um, what is, before you add a subsequent meeting, it's going to be the general plan amendment. There's no action, uh, as far as the dusty maps, and this doesn't approve the actual specific plan. So I just wanted to emphasize that those items are, are set aside as part of a subsequent action.
Thank you. I think it is hard to understand these. I appreciate that.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I will second that. Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Discussion?
Discussion.
So Steve, this, this ordinance is not approving what I would refer to as the small map?
That's correct. It does not.
This is referring to the specific plan.
So it's not actually approving the, um, the specific plan. It's establishing the zoning that allows the specific plan to ultimately be the zoning for the project. So.
Isn't it the, these, when you say zoning, we're referring to both the map as well as the regulations that are contained within the specific plan, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So it would be all regulations that are modified from the zoning code and then whatever the zoning is.
But it does not approve the maps?
Correct.
And it doesn't approve the specific plan document?
Portions, portions of the document would be approved. When you look at the regulations under zoning, those would be approved effectively.
Mr. Grandly, is the map change only, uh, the first stat? I believe so because again, the standards that are going to be discussed with regard to setbacks, block sizes and whatnot, that are listed in the specific plan would be approved as part of that specific plan action. Um, what the pre-zoning is, is.
Map?
Map itself. So what you see up there, um, on the right is the proposed pre-zoning that is a component of this ordinance. Yeah, there are no, uh, text amendments, uh, to our development code associated with this ordinance.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
Aye.
Councilmember Champion?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Passes three one.
Okay, and the, uh, Mr. Mayor, the last item, uh, recommended for action this evening is to introduce, introduce the ordinance approving the development agreement for the Liberty Ranch portion of the Eastview specific plan project, wait for reading and continue to the next regular meeting for adoption, inclusive of the amendment, uh, that was presented this evening, which is to add section 4.4.9 supplemental school financing to the document.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'm, I move, uh, that ordinance, um, and would like to have discussion on it.
I have a motion to Vice Mayor Payne. Do I have a second? I will second that and call for discussion.
I'm sorry, did you want to, uh, explain that a little bit further? That was what I was asking, that particular.
So, um, the only, uh, the only change to the document, uh, beyond what the agreement that's in your packet, uh, at least recommended by staff, is to add section 4.4.9, which is the one page that I handed out, uh, this evening, which deals with supplemental school financing. It contains three paragraphs, a, one general paragraph acknowledging the memorandum of understanding between the school district and the landowner. Uh, the second paragraph acknowledges the importance of the infrastructure CFD, and the last paragraph acknowledges the, uh, proposed development op, in operation of a park adjacent to a school site and, uh, the importance of that, uh, of that park for, uh, playground, uh, playground capacity. So that is the, uh, the amendment that is recommended by, that you include, recommended by staff to be included in the development agreement this evening.
Okay, thank you for that.
All right, then I'll call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Payne? Aye. Councilmember Hewer?
No.
Councilmember Champion?
No.
Mayor Cruz?
Aye. Seeing we have no consenting vote.
Yeah, so the, uh, since it's a tie vote, the motion, uh, to introduce the ordinance failed. Um, what I'd recommend is if there were any, uh, other modifications to the development agreement that would, uh, make it acceptable to one of the two consenting, uh, or dissenting votes, we could, uh, try an alternate motion. If there is not such an alternate motion, then I would recommend that we just continue the balance of the project for the future, future meeting, and hopefully we'll have a full council at the next meeting and, um, can act on the balance of the project if the council desires.
Okay, what's your pleasure? Councilwoman Champion, any changes you wish to have?
I, I, I wouldn't know where to begin. I'm sorry.
Fair enough. Would you like to continue us to the next meeting?
Do we need to make a motion to that effect or?
Um, you don't, you don't actually, uh, need to. I mean, you've, you've acted on the first three items. If there's not a, a motion on the, on the development agreement, then the balance of the project will appear, uh, on the next regular meeting of the city council along with, uh, the item to introduce the ordinance approving the development agreement, uh, so that we can determine whether or not the majority of the council wishes to approve that, that ordinance.
Seeing we have no one who wishes to make any modifications or continuance, then that is what we will do. Moving on to regular calendar. City Clerk's report, please.
I have nothing tonight.
Comments by staff? Emily? Johnny?
Uh, just to clarify, so the, uh, the annexation, uh, city initiated annexation project is coming before us, uh, next month as well. Um, and you received a copy of the, uh, mitigated negative declarations. So that's for your use, your information. Uh, due to the, um, the timing of the getting this to you, uh, we had to run the environmental concurrently, so that's why you see that document, uh, now, uh, during the public review period. Um, that public review period will close on May 16th. Uh, the, uh, hopefully, if everything goes well at our next meeting, uh, May 17th is when you would take final action on the, um, on the pre-zoning ordinance, and at that point, uh, you could go ahead and approve the sequel document at that time as well.
I was going to have none, uh, but it dawned on me that I haven't announced how we did in March for water conservation. And after a difficult February where we fell short of the mark, I'm pleased to announce that we're back, um, in excess of the requirement for GALT, uh, for the, um, month of April, and we're now, as of April 1st, under a reduced 29% mandate instead of the prior 32%. Uh, I don't have the exact number with me tonight. I, I failed to bring that, but, uh, we did exceed the, by a fair amount, and that's a good sign. Probably due in large part to we had a, a, a nice Sierra snowpack, beneficial, uh, set of March rains, and that probably helped folks, uh, keep the sprinklers off a little longer.
Thank you. Glenn?
Chief Stockman? It's been an amazing five weeks, and in that, we, uh, ran, successfully ran a, uh, certain promotional test, and we should have the results of that and a promotion within the next two weeks.
Thank you, sir. Jim? I thought you'd say something about the college.
I would defer to Mayor and, uh, Councilmember Hewer.
Please, ladies first. Councilmember Hewer?
So we did attend tonight the kind of school board meeting for Delta College, but probably didn't pick the best team. They had a very, um, challenging night, I'm sure, ahead of them. But, uh, you know, we displayed our support, our continued support, and I appreciate that the chief drove us and went with us and the city manager and the city attorney, and, uh, we had members from the community, and so I think, uh, you know, we had a warm reception. So hopefully, you know, things will move forward with Delta College. Nothing else?
Councilwoman Champion?
No.
Vice Mayor Payne?
Can we talk about chickens?
Oh, yes.
I was wondering.
I would second that, yes.
Okay, if we could, um, bring that back or discuss.
We'll bring that back.
Thank you.
Very good. And I will, I will, uh, second what, uh, Councilmember Hewer said. That was a lot of fun. Why did we pick the wrong night? But despite that, Chief Stockman, just shy of, uh, breaking the sound barrier, got us here in a timely manner, and we do appreciate that, sir. With that, this meeting is adjourned.